...by the house and it sounds like a war zone. Or the egg and stuff.
I call this meeting to Seymour City Council to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Greg Bennett.
Yes.
Mary Carpenter.
Yes.
Meeting Chris.
Here.
Jim Ashley.
Yes.
I think the chairman there is a quorum.
Very good. So we have a quorum. Before we begin our meeting, I see that we have a distinguished gentleman here in our midst. Mr. Schu, I'd like to call on you, please, sir, if you would stand and everyone stand along with him and we'll have a prayer and then we'll turn around, face the flag and have the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it was a joy to see you at the tent meeting.
Yes, thank you.
And others. Father, thank you for the privilege of gathering tonight. What a blessing to be able to give some direction to our own city and to give an account of ourselves each to the other. Help us to be that people that really listen to each other and care, not only about our own concerns, but the concerns of others. Lest these procedures guide us in harmony, we pray, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. All right, everybody place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody here tonight. I'm glad you all made it out for the meeting. And we've got a roll call, so we have a majority here tonight and we're ready to go into and look at the minutes for old business. Has every member of the council had a chance to look at the, at the old minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Have we started? I see they've been working down nearby that, by the cabinet shop. Is that the starting of that new line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, good.
Any other discussion over the old business? Well, not exactly. Well, it does, it does in sense and then in a way it doesn't. Yes, ma'am. What has happened is we have been through that and it is a part of what we did on the last meeting. So this would be an appropriate time. There will be a citizen's comment time and then I'll open the floor for discussion during that time. This is primarily for the council and we've got to vote on that. Every member had a chance to look at the minutes? Any additions or deletions?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as read.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as read. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second in discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We'll move on in then to new business. We need a motion to approve the bills as presented. We have those in front of us and perhaps you need a little bit of time to look at those and if you have any questions.
I have a question on employees' insurance.
Yes.
On probably, oh, several of them. It's 951, is it? Is that monthly or?
It's probably for, it's broke out by department. So yes, that bill is a monthly bill.
And that's on one employee?
No, no, it's broke out by department.
Oh, so that would be probably, how many?
Yeah, I might have to look. I probably have to get the bill.
What page is that on, Ms. Chris?
It's on page one.
Page one.
I don't have that broke out right now, but it's gonna be in the street department and that's, right now JD's still on there and then two other guys.
Go back three pages, Larry.
And this 1115, how many is that for?
Um, that's in, that's the police, so all the police.
And 2176?
That's electric.
So that would be how many?
Like the girls in the office and two electric picks a four.
1355?
That's sewer department.
And this phone reimbursement check and what is that?
That's, um, they, I, we pay them quarterly. I'm just to, for using their personal phones instead of providing a phone for them.
And we did discuss the phone ordinance, but we have not moved on that. That's still tabled. So we have, as I understand it, Ms. Leslie, that we have two phones that the city reimburses?
Yes.
Right.
And the sun, sunlight financial.
That is dental.
Is that a month?
Yes. Um, but some of that employees pay. So if you look at, yeah, that's a month. Some of it is paid by the employees though, so it's not quite that much for, um, the city. Um, it's dental, short-term visibility and a small life insurance policy.
So the bound looks like, like the employees pay. Where, where is that at?
Well, well, if you look over here at the DL account, the 217 accounts, they end in 217.
Right here.
Yeah, the end of two, that's gonna be the employee portion.
Starts over here.
Does that make sense?
So anything that ends in 217, the employee pays. Any other number, I would assume that the city pays?
Correct. And that's, that goes for Anthem also? Employee insurance.
So part of that, the employees pay for Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shell when they...
Like the families.
Or their families, yes.
And for part of their, part of their premium.
So the 217 is employees, huh?
Yeah, liability account.
Any other question on the bills as presented? Chair would entertain a motion to pay the bills since I see Mr. Bennett's already doing that. Chair would entertain a motion to pay the bills. We have a motion to play the bills as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Continue, Mr. Bennett. All right. We'll move on into citizens' comments. So that's the next item on the agenda. So the chair would, would like to say that we'd like to limit that time that you would come. We need to move that out this way. Thank you. And actually, you'll be addressing your comments to the council. So speak up if you would, tell your name and, and then state your business. Sam's gonna give you a microphone here so that everyone can hear your questions or your comments, if that's okay. Yeah, anyone, chair recognizes this lady here, if you'd, tell us who you are, please.
My name is Ally Roberts. I just moved here about six or eight months ago.
All right.
The library is funded by our taxes and stuff, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So if we can only, the kids can only go until five o'clock and they have parents at work, that, they don't get a chance to go to the library at all. And then there's other young adults that go to college and they do all their, a lot of their term papers and all that there and I do not understand, I'm gonna jump back a little bit here, why, one of, you have two women that work there, correct?
Well, we have, uh...
Or is there more?
Yes, one, two.
One full-time, one part-time. One full, one part.
Okay, we have one, one full-time, one part-time.
So is that halftime 20 hours, 40 hours and 20? Or is, is that how that works?
You know what?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, up to 27 a week.
For the part-time lady.
Why couldn't one of, I mean, I realize the part-time lady, usually a full-timer has more choice in days that they work, but the part-timer, why couldn't she pick up the last quarter, the last part of the week and then pull that half day on Saturday?
Very good question.
I mean, they're supposed to be serving the public, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We're, that's what we're here for, is to serve you. So, you know, that's a very good question. I'm gonna field that question to Mr. Burke. He's the city administrator and he can fill you in on how that works.
We changed the time because the council voted.
I, I've been reading the paper, that's what brought me here.
But we had, of course, we changed the hours here for the city as well, the city people. We had 50 hours of coverage and now we have 40s because we're on H5.
I could speak on that too from experience, but...
Okay.
While we till, you see how it works out beyond and I might be back in a few months.
I did the same thing with the library because I thought that's what I was supposed to do. That was the mandate from the council. So, you know, I accept any responsibility for the decision, I'm one.
I'm not throwing stones.
Okay, but anyway, I, I did that because I, I thought that I was supposed to. Obviously, there's been some, some suggestions that we change it back and some complaints about it and I understand that. I don't personally use the library, but I, I know that a lot of people do and so...
Everybody should use the library. There's always things you don't know.
Amen.
And I get told that a lot. But anyway, that's what happened with the office.
So you'll be working on it, then I take it?
Working on.
The hours changing to a grade?
That's up to these folks' idea.
I think that might be on the agenda coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
To talk about it.
Your proposal is that it be opened up for a half a day on Saturday?
At least a half a day on Saturday.
Yes, ma'am. And what was your name again?
Ally Roberts.
Roberts, yeah. I had, I had another lady call me, but it wasn't you. Okay, good.
Is that exactly your proposal?
No, not exactly. Mainly I'm not a morning person, even though I'm retired. I'm not really complaining for myself, because I'm retired at this point. But maybe from 10 to 2 instead of from 8 to noon.
On, on Saturday?
Yeah. Something like that. 10:30 to 2:30, whatever you, but I think maybe give a little leeway because, you know, especially if they're teenagers, they'd like to sleep in a little bit and they've been going to school, that would give them a little bit snooze time.
Thank you. That, that's very good suggestion, Ms. Robert. And we do appreciate you.
And the only other thing I'm, I'm gonna ask is I, I work for the state and we did this four-hour thing.
Yes, you do.
And, um, and we also bid everything out. Do you guys bid out your insurance coverage and all that stuff?
We, we do bid out the insurance. The insurance has been with the same carrier for some time. But we do, it's been a policy of the city. It's, uh, that we do bid, bid out those things that pertain to the city that are contracted. So it should be bid out, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, the chair would entertain other suggestions or comments from the citizens at this time. I'll say, just like the preacher does when he says those immortal words, "I now pronounce you." So if there are any other suggestions, speak now, forever hold your peace. Seeing none, I will move on into the next piece of business. And I'll try not to overlook you this time, Mr. Dinwiddie. He's not on there?
No, he's not.
None at all? Well, that eliminates that.
Okay.
So what we'll move into now is the supervisor's report and we'll hear from Mr. Mitch Plummer.
Whoops, thank you, Mitch.
This is for...
Also the call associated with this three-phase thing. So we guys can see.
Right. Where'd it go? Two thousand, just more than that. Well, yeah, okay.
How many bids are there?
Four.
A very close thing. All right, what is your, what's your recommendation on this, Mitchell? Uh, Mr. Plummer? Yeah? Cheapest one and that, that's Harry Cooper, is that right? It's right on the top?
No.
No? No?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is. Yeah, that's cheap. Never mind.
Is this a three-phase extension or like a tie line kind of thing? Kind of both?
Both.
Yeah.
Will that involve setting new poles or? We, that's part of that report you gave us last time?
Right. Yeah, we've been setting new poles.
Right.
That reported on last time was maintenance pole replacement. This, this is a new construction, right?
Yeah.
It's not the same as the, the numbers he had mentioned to us last time. This would be in addition to, I believe.
Good. Because I asked for the number and then we, we estimated there'd been like 13, is that right?
Changed down, yeah.
Changed down, right, okay.
How many poles will this job include? Russell, do you know yet?
He's already set. Four. In between, there's poles, sorry, they're on single phase. They're being put in three phases. Poles in between.
I'll make a motion that Mitch purchases this overhead conductor through the lowest bidder, which is Harry Cooper Supply for 2623.
We have a motion on the floor and a second that we accept this bid from Harry Cooper Supply. Just for, so the audience might know, the bid is 2623. The next highest bid, I think, is 2708, 2811 and 3443. So this is the cheapest of any of the bids that we've received for material. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. It's time for discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor then. If seeing no discussion, then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mitchell, we move right on into that. Do you have the poles already that you're gonna need?
Yeah. The media show public supply is bad.
Right. How do we replenish that?
I think, I know it's outside of the daily spending limit, I know it will be. So if we know we're gonna be running low, why don't we just approve that he's, gets bids on a load of poles and he can deal with the best supplier or lowest cost, cost, whichever.
Do you wanna put a number on that?
I, I'm kinda shooting in the dark here, but a load of class two, what, 40 footers?
We actually need some 50s. 40s and 50s or about. Be a kind of a variety.
I'm gonna say close to 15,000, we're gonna match.
So how many poles, Mr. Plummer, are you saying that we need?
Typically, you order...
Mix them all up like that.
Well, just give us a, a number if you would, if you wanna say 10 class two or...
Probably, I'd say maybe 20 maybe and 10 not to that.
Because of the nature of freight on pole delivery, you, you get as close as you can to the gross weight and that differs varying on the pole size and class.
Right.
So rather than a specific number, you, the bidder will usually try to get really close and it's, it varies on poles, so...
Could we have an approximation on the number so we just have...
I could get an approximation, more, you know, and, and, you know, terminate and maybe...
Would you like to postpone that, Mr. Bennett? And we don't have a second yet, so we could do that.
How many, how many poles are, do you have in inventory?
150, 245.
I don't, I don't think, uh...
I think it was 14, 40.
You'll be using several more on this current project.
I think we need to go ahead and get them. We need more in stock than that.
We, we probably will. The thing I was trying to get at is just give approximate number and then...
Roughly 15,000, wouldn't you say? For a mixed load?
Probably, I don't know, 20, 40, maybe, I don't know, I was guessing.
Well, we can, we can do an approximate number here so that we might make it inclusive of the motion and that's gonna be approximately $15,000 expenditure. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I've not, I've not bought poles in several years and kinda shooting in the dark here, but it's...
Approximately, well, we say approximately and then if we need to adjust that upward and downward, we can.
Right.
The, the lead time, I'm, I'm going out on a limb here. I'm gonna assume the lead times are pushed back, given the nature of the hurricanes down south and predominantly poles supplied from the south. So I think just as quickly as we could get them coming would probably be to the best benefit of the city.
I do too.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve approximately 20 poles, is that right? Somewhere around $15,000. So that the motion will be somewhat inclusive and we have a second on the floor.
We're, we're just approving Mitch to go ahead and buy the cheapest one.
That, that's the way I understand the motion, Jim. Yes.
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, could I ask for a vote, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mitch?
I have a question. Will this slow down the cabinet, the work at the cabinet shop? Because he was in the store and he's really needing that done.
Yes, that's a good question. Mitch, can you?
I talked to him today. Not interested.
Yeah.
Yeah. We talked to him today and, and he said, you know, of course, his insurance is what he's pushing in.
Right, right.
And, you know, he seemed to be working on it. As soon as we get this valve, we, we folded a bunch of, Fenton's doing something up today, so tomorrow we're gonna try to shut the water off and split that valve and that hydrant on there and get everything. And then if we get that, if we can get that, when we get that all done, I don't know, if we can take all the way and get that done or as soon as we get that done, you know, that way we can lay pipe and then soon as we turn the corner, I mean, you know, there shouldn't be anything to wait to, it should go real quick. So, I mean, and the valves that, I think HUD's supposed to get some shots in the back next Thursday. So the Zades were not helping HUD on something, we'll be working on that deal.
I saw you were working on it. We came back from Springfield by there.
Mitch? Go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
We were digging between, you know, two fiber optic lines and found a, a line that wasn't marked at all, steel line, not sure exactly what it is.
I need to tell if I'm going to that.
Okay, dude.
Okay.
But anyway, it was, it was pretty interesting. But HUD, of course, is, is really good, isn't that bad? But we made a lot of progress today.
And we found the valves could shut down, but not the ones that we were looking for, the ones that was already uncovered.
Did, did you find a valve?
Quite a bit down, but we shut it down. And, and we did that to make sure so we broke something over there that we could hurry up, shut it down before we turned the valve. And that worked in our favor.
So we found a valve, Mitch? We did?
We did, we did a valve, not the one that...
Not the one we were looking for?
Shut my people off.
Okay, all right.
Before we get off of this?
Yes, Sam, would you, would you address that, please?
No, I want to address something else before we get off the water.
Oh, very good.
Okay, we still have the chlorine on and excrete. And this is the reason. We, we wanna make sure that the integrity of the water remains good until we get this done. So we're gonna have some chlorine smell and some chlorine paste, but that's to be expected until we get this project finished.
Yeah, someone asked me to thank Claude though.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, have, uh... We, we didn't find the valve, but we were gonna be able to cut the water off?
Different valves.
Okay.
Valves that's already exposed that we can get to and, and we turned them off today for a little while and then went over to the, the Zades over there and I started valves off where they could pump in the hydrant up and make sure it shut off.
Right.
And when it shut off, I mean...
Everything stopped, okay. Now, are we gonna put the cutoff on Division Street?
People leave up there by the water.
Okay, so it'll be on Clinton? The cutoff will be up on Clinton by the water hydrant, for, by the fire hydrant?
Yes.
Right, okay. So it will be up there, we'll cut the water off, run the line, cut them back on?
We'll, yes, take the, there is, there's a compression key right there, it's one for the old fire plug, it's right there behind the, uh, metal box.
Okay.
And that, we're gonna pull off, cause them are not good.
Right, right.
Run the bolts on there, work that load off there. And then we'll get that on there and we got all the center loaded on there and pipe that on there quick as we can where we can, and it's got a valve on it, we can shut it right off and then we can turn the water back on.
Very good. And just for, for the people that do not know, we've got all the materials stockpiled and over there at the cabinet shop now. We've got gravel over there, we've got pipe over there and we've got the valves, we've got the fittings. We're, we're ready to go. All we need to do now is to put it in. Okay.
We're also moving that fire plug 20 foot down the, out of that driveway.
I saw that.
Good, good.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments from the council?
Oh, I have one.
Yes.
Did we get any quotes or have you checked on the equipment to find the cutoff valves?
I haven't done that, Mary.
Okay.
I've had no malicious things to do, but I haven't, I haven't gotten to it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think it would benefit them greatly and the town.
Yes, I agree with you.
Speed things up.
Would expedite those, those type of events, for sure. Would expedite those, those type of events, for sure.
Probably help with the Missouri One call locates to probably remark in accordance to those laws.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Plummer? Thank you, Mitch, for your report.
The reason that we ain't been working on that is we've been having quite a few water leaks, and a lot of water leaks is when we start, we start using chlorine, I mean, board and road. There's also, you know, line, calcium, whatever, you know, we call it pipes, because it coats inside the pipe.
Yeah, it's calcium.
If you got a crack in the pipe, you know, when it eats that off there, then you know it's causing the leak.
So that's what you're saying, the chlorine eats the, the calcium and?
They, you know, they said, you know, we're gonna take that chlorine in the water line, and then we'll have leaks.
Okay.
Because it, you know.
Cleans it out.
We have.
And somebody does that, and that's why it seems like we've been having problems here.
Right, right, we have, what, we had two major leaks?
Yeah.
Right. Mm-hmm, and I don't know, have you, have you had smaller ones?
Yes, I've had smaller ones.
Sure. Well, day-to-day activities? Okay. Anything else from Mr. Plummer while he has the floor? Seeing nothing else, Mr. Plummer, thanks for your report. Thanks for your work. Assistant Supervisors report, Chuck Smith. Mr. Smith?
Should I have a copy of my report? And you know, we got pages, day-to-day stuff, and we've been working on the sidewalk for the school. Down there, we're four, forty-eight feet of sidewalk this week, kind of finished.
Saw that.
It turned out real nice. It'll be, it'll be more and more next week, so that's pretty well, we're not wasting all of our time right now. Of course, we're, we're a man down with JB being gone now, so that's, that's kinda slowed us a little bit. Grass has slowed down a little bit now, so.
A lot.
It's up to spend more time down there, so.
I have a question for you. Does our lawnmowers have the guards on them?
Yes.
You, you two, you and someone was up there mowing today.
Me totally.
And does, I don't know if lawnmowers have security guards, but man, he was going, I didn't realize who that was. He was going this natural, like, you know, but man, he was going, I didn't know lawnmower to know that fast. Wow.
He moved as fast as you want to bounce on it, but.
So the lawnmowers do have guards on them?
Yes.
So, because I know the guy that's got the new business, you know, he said he had a big piece of wood flew up against his window. I thought he said that they didn't have guards on them.
A new business?
Pennington's old store.
Yeah, Pennington's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he showed them.
Does it go in the alley or something?
No, in the park.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, they all, all the lawyers have guards on them, but third square, though, you get lost sticks and stuff.
Yeah, right.
And they, they're most likely long ways. The dirt is flopping, man. Yeah, yeah, they're on spring and they'll, you hit them, so they'll sit there.
Well, he went, I don't know who's mowing that day, he said he went to talk to them, and said he didn't have a guard on them. I couldn't imagine not having a guard on them.
I don't know, I'll find out, I don't know which.
I don't know who's mowing it.
I didn't know about them, so, so I'll get slop. I'll find out.
That was the Apple Festival, when the Apple Festival was going on now.
Yeah, they, they do all have guards on them, so I don't, I don't know what happened on that, but.
Any other questions for Chuck? Chuck, if, if we've got eighty feet completed, you, you think it's gonna be about three more weeks? What do you anticipate per week on then? How many feet per week?
How many feet?
Yes, sir.
I think next week, probably, probably another eighty foot next week.
Okay.
Because next week we'll be crossing the first drive there at Jim's store and buildings.
Who, whose property is that?
Jim's actually.
Oh, okay.
You know, we'll be crossing the first drive, and we gotta go deeper across the drive.
Right.
Because we're low off, you know, of course, mo dots dictating how we better do this.
Yes.
The way, the way they want it done, so we gotta go eight inches, you know, and to have every bar in there, so we'll cross, we'll cross Jim's first drive next week, probably about eighty foot, that'll take us to that, that electric pole there, if you're, if you're going east.
Going east.
It'll take us to about right there. Then the first, next week, we'll do two pores, we'll cross the second drive, then, then later in the week, we'll go on down to the corner where it turned, well, where it overturned, to go up to the safe room. So the next, next week, we'll probably do about eighty foot, eight more feet, then the, the next week, we'll probably do double that, probably a hundred and sixty, but.
What would, I mean, why would we get, pick up another eighty feet in that week?
We can only shut down one of his drives.
I see, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
Mitchell?
Yeah.
Okay, because we gotta shut down one driveway to town, okay.
They'll have to say it has to cure, has to cure because of the weight.
Well, sure, that's right, yeah.
And we can't, like I said, we can't close down both drives and shut the doors off.
And then I see that you've been picking up brush too, so I know, I've noticed that you picked up all the cut brush at the cemetery. So I'm glad, because if it lays there too long, of course, it kills the grass, and I'm glad to see that was picked up. Uh, as a general rule, if, if a citizen cuts down brush and lays it out to the curb, what is the rule? How do you work picking up brush on that schedule?
Well, what we do right now is, if they, they call in and we get a work order, it gets done quicker, because we've got a record, okay, there's brush at this address. So when we get, we don't have a regular scheduled wood brush, so what we do is when we've got a little window of time between the project, we'll go haul brush for a couple hours. So if we've got a work order on hand, tell us where it's at.
Something you know where to go, right.
Go get that first. Then, after that, we've just gotta go look for it if they don't call it in.
The only other thing that these folks maybe not, don't know either, is that you are our building inspector. So, we've got a request. You wanna speak to that, about this lady up here on the front porch? Maybe you wanna say anything about hearing meeting, or you want me to say something?
Yeah.
Uh, there, there is a property here on the corner of Clinton and Main Street, and they tore all the front porch off of that old building there. It's a, it's a centerpiece for our town, really needs to be improved, so now the ladies begin to improve that, but we just need to make sure that they get a, a building permit before they start construction on that porch again. This property, I think, next door is gonna see some construction either this week following or shortly thereafter, and to start some improvements there. I noticed that we had Dr. Billings who's doing some repair work on his building. Do you, do you have a, a building permit on that? That building that is immediately to his, the south, he owns as well, do you know if they're gonna do any work there?
I haven't contacted them.
If you would, I think it would be in order to contact them and just see if they include that in their, you're right, yeah, because that, it's getting in pretty bad state of repair.
Which house is that?
No, no, it's the, the building right south of Landon's chiropractic office. And, yeah, I know he's, he's made his building look really nice, uh, but they, they're gonna build some steps on the back of it, and we just need to sure ourselves that that's done according to code. So if you would, check on that and.
I left a message with a woman that's got a property on the corner. I haven't got a hold of her in person yet, but I left a message.
Okay. Right, okay, good. And then, the, the other.
She lives right behind me.
Oh, does she?
Yes, she lives at townhouse right in behind that, and that belongs to her daughter, and that needs repair as well. But the other thing was that I noticed that they were laying the footer for some foundation on Steel Street on the Rexarus Building.
Yes.
Uh, do you know if they have a, or what they're gonna do down there?
They, they do have permits on that.
Okay.
I inspected the footings. Uh, they're just adding a, an office and a bathroom on their building.
Right, right. And we're glad to see them improve, but we just need to make sure that, that the city improves according to code and everybody gets treated equally.
Yeah, their, their inspections are.
Great, great. Okay, any other questions for Chuck while he has the floor? Seeing none, thank you for your report, Chuck, and for answering the questions. We're now ready for the administrative report, Mr. Sam Burke. Mr. Burke, you had the floor.
You have my report. I send them to you weekly, so you should have them. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, and I've got a couple of other things once we get through the report.
This grass on the tombstones gets worse this year than I had ever seen. When the Mennonites were mowing the cemetery, they blew the grass off with a blower, and there was never any grass on the tombstones. But, just a comment.
Okay.
So you did talk to those boys about getting the grass all over the tombstone?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And they're going to try to improve.
We, we have a lady at that, here in town, that's in a wheelchair all the time, she's on the sidewalks all the time. And she stopped by this week and complained about this sidewalk right off on the city hall here all the way to the corner. And because we've been notified that it needs to be fixed, it puts us in a position to, for, you know, for a lawsuit if we don't fix it. So it's gonna, I mean, Chuck and I went out there today, or talked about today, and we're looking at three to five thousand dollars to fix that whole thing across the front. And there's some gaps there and some that are really deep, and so we need, we need to get it fixed. And so, we possibly can do it for less than that, but I don't wanna sell it short. I may be able to get it all done for three grand, but anyway, I need your permission just to start on that and get that done, or at least put it on the list and do it when we get through with the other sidewalk.
So is that about the old MFC building?
Yes, ma'am, it's right here in front of our city hall, and goes all the way down to the corner now. The business on the corner, they put that in themselves, and it's good, so it's just this side of that down to this corner. Then, of course, this corner will need to be modified as well for ramps and all that.
We don't want to have any options.
No.
I mean, it's something that's got to be done.
No, if somebody gets hurt, we're gonna be in a mess.
Yes, ma'am.
That's this south side of the square, Sam?
Yes, sir.
All along the front of?
The north side of the square.
North side.
This side, this side, all on this side. Okay. And, and I've noticed traffic there, when I'm up there in the office, there is some foot traffic there, for sure.
Well, that lady in the chair, of course, has pointed out several things, and we fixed them, as, you know, as we could. But anytime we get a notice like this, we really don't have a choice.
Yeah. Setting ourselves up before we don't.
Considering we have one pending for the Larry.
Yeah.
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 If you need a motion, I'll make it.
We have a motion on the floor to do the sidewalk project that Mr. Burke has presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Mr. Burke, I'd say proceed with that project.
And I thank you for your cooperation. I have one other thing to talk to you about tonight, and that is that I sent you an email this week. As you know, Ron Wright is retiring from, from our city, and we wanted to, if we could, to let him leave with his sidearm and his badge since he's the chief. And, and if the city doesn't see fit to do that, that's your decision, of course. The other side of that coin is, I will need permission to replace the weapon, because the policeman and I and Larry want to, to pay for it, so that we can give it to him. So there's two options here, either the city can do it, or we need permission to replace one of the, one of the two, so.
I believe when, when we went to city-owned firearms, there was an issue that arose quite quickly, and there were some policies put in place pertaining to the firearms that, that police possess that are owned by the city. I believe one of those provisions that the officers could retain the weapon along departure with council approval. I'll make a motion that we do just so.
But if we let the badge, if we let the badge out and somebody gets their hands on it, not to say that they will.
I don't think this is uncommon practice.
Well, who paid for the guns? Does he?
I'm sure the city did.
The city did.
The city-owned weapon.
And you say they just give it to him?
It's, it's a token of appreciation, if you will.
You know, I'd, I'd say if he would want to, to pay for it at our cost, but just to give it, how much do they cost?
Three fifty.
Three fifty?
Three fifty to four hundred.
I'll write the check.
Put me, put me down for part of it.
I mean, we're, we're willing to, the guys are willing.
Well, it, it would seem to me that, you know, and it, and it might be a question of liability, Paul, I don't know, but if, if the employees collectively purchase the firearm, then it won't be the city firearm any longer.
That's the other choice.
And that's the other option, true.
I don't think we should give him the badge. I really don't. I don't feel comfortable with it, because there are so many.
Paul, is that normal?
Yeah.
I would say it is, especially with the chief of police, it's normal. They typically take their badge and make something, because they put it on the wall, which is a normal thing.
What would happen if somebody got their hands on it? Would the city be liable for it?
I, I mean, that's a tough call. I mean, they, somebody could also go make a badge.
Well, true.
I mean, we could, I could come up with all kinds of scenarios where somebody could be filed a lawsuit, but I mean, it's just.
Right.
I don't see a big deal with it.
So, do they normally give them their gun too?
Well, if it's one, a lot of cities do the gun, and it's got their badge number and their name on it. I mean, it's, it typically goes with the officer.
Their badge and gun match, as far as the numbers and everything, and there's a picture of the badge on the weapon.
And, and I would say it's not like common if you're just a, a street officer every time they leave you, but I mean, when it's, it's, but it's the chief of police, it's fairly common.
My, my, my thoughts on this, councilmen and ladies, is that the chief Wright has gone through a very traumatic time in his life in a great loss. But, you know, your pleasure is what, what the city needs to carry forth, so we got two, two ways to deal with it. It's your, it's your pleasure.
Well, here's where I'd say, and I'd go my part, I'd say, let's take a collection, buy it for him. I mean, we're talking about the cities, man, I mean, all the people.
Yeah, pot's getting sweeter all the time, Ms. Chris.
Well, you know, we gotta realize what, you know, all the people in Seaworth.
Yes, and, and I remember Dean Rowan, I remember Dean Rowan.
You know, I'd go my part, but I don't think we ought to pay for it. I don't think the city should be, I really don't.
Okay, well, Grady, would you like to, we don't have a, a second on the motion yet.
So I suppose the motion dies for lack of support. Do as you will.
We don't have a second on the motion to present the chief with his gun and badge.
I just, I just, I just sent the city, give it.
I just, I just, I'd just say the city give it to him, however, I can't see where that's gonna happen and.
But, but what, what I'm saying.
Well, I'm, well, I'm.
We're talking about, you know, all the people.
I'm, 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 I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue over it. I mean, that's what, that's what I think we should, that's what I think we should do. But I'll, I'll put my part in, let's just try and give it to him.
Well, let's, let's have a motion then Jim, if you would, to, uh, uh, so that a collection be taken, uh, the, the gun and badge paid for and then presented to the chief, is that agreeable?
I'd just go with Sam's second option.
Uh, the second option. We have a motion on the floor for that second option, do I hear a second?
Which was?
Uh, that, uh, it will be independently paid for and then it won't be the city's property any longer because it's been purchased by, uh, a private entity.
Right.
And then the chief be presented to that.
And then no one can complain?
That's right. That's exactly right. So I need a second.
We'll write it down that we can.
I might add that you would need to amend your firearm policy in the future to reflect that as an option.
Very good.
Yeah.
It's not a, an option that we sell to a private entity. The option was that we would allow the, uh, said employee retain it, but so as long as we make the provisions to the firearm policy, then I guess that would be mine.
We are gonna have a, a time when we review the policy and procedure manual, so that's, that's a good point. Ms. Alk, if you would, be sure to remind us of that when we, uh, consider that and it'll take a whole meeting or maybe longer to, to do that. So we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
I think Mitch had something to reject.
I'm gonna make a second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second now then, time for discussion.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you want me to transfer it from the city to Ron again.
I didn't say it's gonna be a license.
That way that if anything, he sells it at the store or down the road.
So that the sale can be public, or is that what you're saying Mitch?
It's going straight to Ron regardless of who pays for it.
Exactly.
It's going to Ron, it's going Ron, but.
If you transfer it to Ron, if he just, I mean, it would be, if anything ever happens with it, city, you know, city be clear for it.
That's what we want.
Right, right, exactly.
So you're gonna, you're gonna prepare the paperwork for that, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. All right, we've got a motion on the floor and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I guess as soon as you know how much that is Sam, let us know and we'll give you a check.
Yep.
So that, that's gonna happen.
Thank you council for your consideration.
Yes sir. Anything else for, uh, our city administrator while he has the floor?
I forgot anything Chuck, but.
Seeing none? Thank you for that report Sam. We'll move on into the mayor's report. Um, I don't have a lot today, but, uh, just a couple of things. The chief Wright's resignation, you've all seen that, do we have a?
No.
Copy of it?
I don't, sorry. It's in his file.
You have, you have a copy of that Sam?
Did we email that out? I thought we emailed it.
What are we talking about?
Ron's resignation.
I didn't see a resignation.
I didn't get a copy.
You did?
No sir.
I, I did, but. I did, but let me, uh, let me take a look here. Has every member of the council seen the resignation?
Yeah.
He put a letter in the newspaper, yeah.
And it was, it was in, okay, so it's, it's a matter of public knowledge and everyone had, should have been able to have seen it. So what I am moving toward is a motion to accept the resignation, we've got to do that. As a parliamentary procedure. Uh, we have a resignation from chief Wright to resign. I need a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the resignation, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Think chief Wright has done a good job. Uh, he's been with us for six years, he's had a lot of adversity. Uh, cities experienced some of that, I came in on the tail end of some of that. I've met the man and I really liked the man. He, uh, I think, uh, outgoing, we should be maybe a little more outgoing in, uh, let the public know that we're actually people. And, uh, but I think, uh, overall, we say he did a, did a pretty good job for us. So, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye that you accept the resignation?
Aye.
All those pose same sign? Motion passes unanimously that we accept the resignation of chief Wright. Uh, Mrs. Davis I might add, when it came to the subject of the library's hours changing and she's down the street from me and spent some time visiting with me about that, she said, "I have a grandson that recently graduated college." And to help him in his studies, he went to the library and did extensive research for his degree at our public library. And she said, "I do not think that he would have gotten his degree had it not have been for that time that he could have went there and, and carried on his research." She said, "I've got a second son that's in high school and they go there for their research as well." So, uh, these library hours, it seems that the citizens' pleasure is to, uh, keep a Saturday work schedule and to, uh, accommodate the, the citizens on a Saturday. And I don't know how it was, was exactly before. Can you speak to that Sam? How, how was the schedule before?
I'm not really sure either, nine to nine to six or nine to six and a half a day on Saturday. Twelve to four or something like that.
No, like probably nine to one or something.
Okay.
Okay.
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon on Saturday, okay, so it was three hours on Saturday. But it was used extensively and I, and I point that out to say that, uh, many of our folks in town, i- if we didn't have that available to them, uh, it would create a hardship on, on the people, especially the ones trying to advance theirself to get degrees to, uh, um, better their lifestyle. So I'm, I also would be in favor of doing that. How we could do that? Would I suppose be a clarification on, uh, because, uh, Ms. Chris, uh, councilman Chris, you, you presented that amendment to change the hours. So, uh, for clarification on that, uh, Mr. Bling, would that be in order?
Um, I think that we have to reopen the old one, uh, from councilman Chris and then basically make the motion to amend that to, uh, reflect the library.
Just leave the hours the way it is.
The library hours.
I would make a motion to.
Nine to six.
To, to amend, amend your original motion.
Yes.
So that the library's hours would remain the same.
Exactly.
Which, which they might as well put in there what they were, which I think you just said it was nine to six and then nine to noon on Saturday.
Nine to six and nine to noon on Saturday.
While we're doing this, can we just go ahead and change the rest of the hours back? I think that would be appropriate.
I don't think that would be appropriate.
Well, we have.
It's a suggestion.
We, we have this motion to amend and it has. I think it has to be made by the original person that made the motion. So only Ms. Chris or councilman Chris can amend her motion and she wishes to amend it to say that the library and I suppose the fire department would remain the same.
Yes. I would make an amendment that the library and the fire department would same.
Remain the same schedule.
Do you want to count, do you want to put the police department in there too?
Well, the police department was separated from it, I think, uh, councilman Ashley at the last meeting. We accepted them from, from that. So, uh, we have an amendment to the motion by the original motion maker and do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
We have a mo- amendment to the first and a second, now we've got time for discussion.
Well, they are lucky for those who use the library.
Yes. Well, that's why I bring it up because, and we've had some discussion about it. So, uh, and I think it's a good thing. This lady's presented with us with that too. So you, you're, you're glad to know you're not by yourself in that, there are others in, in town that extensively use our library. Okay, we have a motion and a second and I didn't hear any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, sounds like we need roll call vote please.
Grady Bennett?
No.
Mary Carpenter?
Yes.
Megan Chris? Yes. Jim Ashley?
No.
No, based on the fact that the amendment is, uh, to a motion that I originally did not support.
Right, I understand, I understand.
Two said, I agree with the hours being changed back to the original schedule.
You just don't want to vote for it.
It's just, uh, an amendment to a.
I got you.
Record that I was in opposition to, so for conformity it would make sense that I.
Chair, chair recognizes that and appreciates your position. Well, that would come down to the, the mayor to break the tie, which is the general consensus or just the way the rule runs. So, uh, and I think it's a good move to, to leave the library open for all these people who would use the library. And you, you may be educating the next president, I don't know. But anyway, you're helping someone along life's way to be able to use a facility that we support with tax dollars from the general populace. So the mayor votes in favor, the motion passes, or the amendment to the motion passes and will, uh, the original motion will be amended to reflect, uh, the amended part of that.
May the minutes reflect my opposition, why I'm opposed.
The minutes may also reflect that, uh, councilman Bennett is also, uh, in opposition to the amendment to the original motion.
Basically, I just wanted it to reflect the statement I made as why I was opposed.
Very good, then it just, um, let the minutes reflect that, uh, Mr. Bennett makes a statement in, um, in the contents of that statement. Anything else? Uh, I would, uh, reflect on one thing. Uh, we've made some progress this week on the Brixby Cemetery property. Uh, if you've noticed in your, uh, check register there, then Mr. Bennett has already paid the bill for twenty seven dollars. That's to record the deed from the county to the city of Seymour and that will make that property in, uh, perpetual, uh, estate, the property of the city of Seymour. There is some property there, uh, Mr. Burke and I discussed that, that can be sold as lots uh, for the maintenance and upkeep of that cemetery, yes.
That goes all the way north to the highway?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
To the highway right of way.
Right, yeah.
Here, here's what is actually happening on that. Uh, we, we've, uh, been approached by the counties, would you take it and we agreed to take it. However, the county had, uh, let's say a hundred, I want to say fifty feet of that property already in their possession. The balance of that property that, uh, Ms. Denny, uh, signed as a heir of that family, uh, deeded the property through a quick claim deed to the county. The county will in turn with that hundred feet, deed us the fifty feet that they already have back to the city. And the only thing that I would tell the city is just this, I asked the, uh, Diddy Hamilton, uh, if a title search had been done or if there would be title insurance on that property and they said, "No, they did not require any for the county" and so there would not be any forwarded to the city. And the reason why is that, uh, the heirs on that Brixby property, we, we were lucky to find one here in town and Sam, uh, graciously consented to get in touch with that lady. She met us here at the office and she signed the deed and, uh, Ms. Alk notarized the deed. Uh, their deed, the county's deed has to be recorded first and then the, uh, city's deed recorded behind that to have a continuous title change. But the, uh, the, their consensus was that there would be no opposition to such a deed and so they didn't feel like that, uh, that one was, uh, necessary. So while we may have a little exposure there, it's, it's small. So I wanted you to be aware of that.
I think Mitch has something to say there?
Oh, I didn't see Mitch.
A lot of the question were, like, I don't know, is it like on cemetery like that, so a lot of times there's promised places. So I mean, once the city gets full ownership of it, do they need to put a deal in the papers that kind of all bets is off that if you promise there, that you can prove it to?
Uh, if, what, I don't understand the question, Mr. Plummer.
See, like everybody was very different before. They was very, you know, they just had faith that somebody was going over the back of it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Rixey, uh, if he was a Rixey descendant. Now, but you, probably some people show out there that thinks that they're gonna be buried over there and that, you know, the city's got it, the city's gonna honor that or is it, you know, all bets off, you know, that it's gonna have paper, you know, there.
We, we have a question or a comment from the audience and then we'll let the council address that. Yes, Shelley?
Basically the same thing because I deal with the cemetery, the Masonic out here and I do a warranty deed as you know, because you sign each and every.
I do, yes.
And we have to sell them and our cemetery person is James Hill and he has to go out. We have them marked out with markers, they're little identifying markers and there's a certain distance between and there's no records of the Rixey cemetery. Some of the markers are just rocks, just plain rocks out there that have no information on them whatsoever. We don't know who's where, um, so how are we gonna know if there is upcoming people that think they own lots up there? How are we to know that, um, scale the lot, what cost, is it the same as the Masonic? How do we go forward with this?
That's a very good question.
Roughly?
About a hundred.
Couldn't we run an ad in the paper, you know, and, and ask if they would come forward? Relatives of Brixys?
I think you would have two hundred come forward for the second. What, what I think is, is you could just, uh, take a best guess and say, say thirty percent, retain thirty percent, uh, for any issues like that, outstanding promises that might arise and, and sell, say sixty or seventy, but retain thirty or forty just, just for another ten years and twenty years in case that should come up.
I think that's.
Yeah, it will come up.
An excellent solution, Mr. Bennett, uh, you'd like to put that in form of a motion?
Well, I would entertain discussion on the, the, it wouldn't necessarily have to be thirty, that was an arbitrary number.
Well, I mean, that's, that I think is a good number, that's a good number. Would you, uh, would you also put a time limit on that?
We have something.
It's like Shelley was saying, it's also gonna have to be plotted, marked out, whatever to, for the lot. Because I don't think it's ever gonna be.
I doubt it.
There's probably people buried out there with no marking on it.
Roughly.
Mark that you don't think that anybody had. Need to be logged and ordered, colored, pinned and everything or.
So, so there's a potential for roughly a hundred, uh, vacant lots? Right. Uh, how many, do we know? Rough guess, how many existing there are out there?
I, I never counted them, I've noted that thing a bunch of times, I guess I ought to know, but, uh, I don't really know. I, I think we ought to do like we do in the Masonic cemetery and that is leave the old part completely alone. And just get on the north side there, draw a line in the sand if you will. And, uh, and I don't know if there's any way to examine the ground that's open there to find out if there may be people buried there, if there's no mark for it. The last two or three people that were buried there. The last two or three people that were buried there on the north side, all they did was just that metal thing you stick in the ground, that's all that's there, and a post.
Yeah.
And they don't want markers, and so. And over there by the telephone pole, right there at the end of Anthony's property, there's a sunken place in the ground where you can tell somebody's buried, but there's no stone, no indication. But at, when flowers go out, somebody comes by there and puts flowers on that spot, so I know somebody buried there. And we'll, you know, we'll need to check into that, see if we can find out any information, so.
So maybe we need to entertain a buffer zone rather than a set number of lots? Is that what you're suggesting, kind of?
Yes, I think we really need to investigate and find out what we can about the people that are there, and then make a determination on what's left in order to sell lots and help with the maintenance.
Yeah.
It's $70 a month to have our, our mowing to have that mowed, so, you know, we do need some income from that.
And this is just to, to help pay for the maintenance upkeep of the cemetery? Is all it's about? Well, I think that's a good discussion, if we want to wait and do a further investigation, as Sam suggested. Or do you want to continue with that idea?
I think it would be a safer bet to allow more time to research, or look into what might better be considered, rather than just acting on it right now.
Okay, then the chair would move then to-
It's a timely issue.
The chair would move to table this discussion until, well, let's give it two council meetings, would that be appropriate?
Would that give you 30 days?
Give you 30 days, yeah.
You'd at least need 30 days or more to do research on that.
In the meantime, we will receive title to this property. Soon as the county gets titled by a quick claim from Ms. Denny, they will forward a deed to us by general warranty deed. And I believe that's correct. I've got a copy of the deed, if I brought it with me.
Now, did you decide to put something in the paper as well?
That's a suggestion, do, I think that we probably should put something in the paper.
That might bring-
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
I would maybe do that after you do the research.
Yeah.
And here is the deed we'll receive from the county. It's a copy of what we will receive, it's not a signed copy. But we will receive, the jargon in the legal is a little bit different, and that's because they already have 50 feet. Ms. Denny deeded to the county through a quick claim deed, 100 feet, and so the county will in turn deed to the city 150 feet. The only thing that I see there is that there's a little bit of ground on the north end of that, Sam, that most every property owner down through there, they mow that and keep it up, according to Mr. Anthony on one side and the church property on the other, and they're right in the middle. It might do good to have those folks to go ahead and take that in when they mow it, if that would be-
You've mentioned that too.
Okay. So other than that, the mayor doesn't have a lot tonight. We've had a good meeting, a good meeting, good comments. So I think, Tommy, did you have some, I think you had your hand up, you did? Okay, you got anything to say about the Apple Fest? Me too, me too. Especially the children's part of it, that's the most enjoyable part I had out there. So we did good, I guess. Did the vendors do pretty good, do you know, Tommy, have you, have you heard?
They're doing well.
Everybody did good. We had a great Apple Fest this year. Had a lot of people come, and the town was full, and a lot like that. So is there anything else to come before this body, for the good of Seymour?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, did I miss you, Paul?
No, you, I was gonna ask that for you, and I don't have anything to add.
And you don't have anything to add?
No.
Very good. How's your son doing?
They're all doing, I have two of them, they're all doing good.
Right.
Keeping me hopping.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. You got a son that's up at school in Hills, Hillsboro?
Yeah.
Right. Well, I hope he gets to be a good pitcher so he can help the Cardinals out here down the road. All right, if there's nothing else to come before this body, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
The Alderman's report.
Oh, we didn't? Well, then let's have an Alderman's report. I didn't see it on my agenda, I guess I was moving along so fast and everything was going so smooth, I just missed it all. We'll start on this, we'll start on this then with Mr. Bennett.
I think anything that I had for tonight has been addressed in a prior conversation or via Sam's report.
So, nothing further?
Not at this time, no.
Councilman Carpenter?
Well, the only things, most of it's been addressed. I had a gentleman ask me about the bowling alley property. What is the zoning on that?
Business?
Business.
Do we have a designation like R2?
B1 or B2? B2.
B2.
Business B2?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That time before the council, we voted on it, and all that.
There was also an amendment to what B2 designation included, wasn't there? There was quite a bit to do with that.
Quite a bit to do with that, yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong.
And another one, oh, if you've got a pile of tree limbs and stuff that have been piling up over the time, do we need a permit to burn those?
Shaun just left.
Shaun just left.
There is a ordinance for a burning, at the time that you can burn, and it's pretty much during business hours.
Yeah.
Mary, would it be because there's a desire to burn them, or?
Because we couldn't get them out to the road.
Okay.
Well, now, we can burn leaves, can we not? In the ditches in front of the property?
Well, these are sticks and trees, limbs and-
Sticks and all that.
Yeah, all that.
They can be taken up to the road?
No.
Okay.
No, there's no way.
Just too much?
You'd have to have a dump truck to come in, or a backhoe.
I would offer to assist, and I thought maybe it was just some limbs to drag.
No, if it was that, we'd drag them out there.
Well, I'll tell you, we did burn some, quite a few things out there on the right of ways that we cleared for this line that's going out.
Yeah.
But we, I asked them to bring the fire department out to supervise that burning and to wet the property down around it.
Well, we've burned this in the past after storms and stuff, you know, you pick up limbs and you just throw them in the pile. But we always stay out there with a fire hose, it is never left unattended.
I would say to notify the fire department, make sure that they know that the house is not burning, and- Ms. Miller?
When they call in and ask if they can burn, we just usually let them know the timeframe when they can, as long as the wind's not blowing, and the contact, I usually transfer them directly to Shaun at that time, in case there's a burn ban or any other restrictions going on at that time, I direct them directly to him.
Very good, very good.
I guess I've already-
So that would be the procedure?
Right.
Let them know when you're burning?
Mm-hmm. That's all I've addressed, everything else during the open meeting.
Thank you, Councilman Carpenter. Councilman Crisp?
Did we ever get any gravel in at the South Park? Weren't we going to put some gravel in where the swing sets and stuff was at?
Haven't done that yet. But the plan was to start on that soon, the sidewalk, so.
No, but they won't. And people still wanting to know about the PPA, and we was going to set a time and study that.
We have talked about that, yes, and-
Has the city ever had anyone to study that, or?
Do we have a study on that, Ms. Halk?
We did have, it cost about $19,000, if I recall, and that would have been in the year of 2012. I cannot call the firm off the top of my head, would have to look at that.
Do we, do we still retain a copy of that study?
Yes, we do, and Barbara Blakely was the engineer, and she's also the one who wrote our schedule for PPA, and the one that figures the amount each month.
Correct.
Okay. So I thought maybe you could maybe table that and make a time for a study on that, or something.
Okay. What I would suggest is this, that if we have a study on that, Sam, if you would make that available to each council member, so that we could designate, I guess it's two weeks away, we could even designate this next meeting. We were going to talk about it at this meeting, but we just haven't. But maybe we do need to get some more information, and then to move on that. Now here, I've offered this, I think I spoke to Sam about it, and I've forgotten about this too, Ms. Crisp, is that I have purchased a, an insulating machine. So here's just a thought to throw out to you as a council. I'll make that, that machine available to the city. The city could possibly purchase some of the cellulose material which that machine installs. We could utilize a couple of our employees for our disadvantaged citizens of the town, and that might be a more economical answer for the city, to try to achieve saving some of these folks from their utility bills. Now, old people, they're on blood thinner, you know, they're not active anymore, so they're in their homes, and some of these are inadequately insulated. So maybe the, a good answer to that, or an alternative answer, might be to help insulate the homes, caulk around the windows and spend a day. It doesn't take a lot of time, you just need someone that can get in the attic, and one person to run the machine, be at no cost, the city won't have to pay anything for the use of the machine, except that we would have to purchase the cellulose material that would go in the attics of these homes.
There's only one problem with that. When you start it, somebody making $112,000 a year is going to want you to blow insulation in their homes.
Well, then that's a good point, and I've thought about that. I think the requisite would be to study their income guidelines, Jim, and make sure that they qualified, and we'd set a number on that. And so anybody above this number is not eligible, anybody below this number, come in, make application to the city, and we'd make a schedule like we do everything else, and accommodate those people as time and opportunity presented itself.
Would that type of activity not be more appropriate for, say, one of the local foundations or groups of some sort? I think, I think, and I'm not opposed to it, it's a great idea. Possibly even you could, you could use grant money or something to fund the insulation, but it's completely contradictory to what we just spoke about. If we're going to use employees' times, wages, hours, it adds up, and it would quickly exceed the $350 pistol we just declined. So I think, I think for conformity that we should probably-
What, does that cut your fist off?
Well, that's-
Tax dollars, tax dollars. Are we going to use tax dollars, employees?
Offering a suggestion, I mean, this might be, I mean, this, we could discuss it, but this might be something for the church groups to come in on.
Yeah.
And like I say, the machine would be at no cost. We just have to find the money to insulate those houses.
I just think if we're going to be mindful of tax dollars allocating to city employees to go into residents' attics, probably crossing some lines there.
Yeah, the liability alone.
Well, it's something to consider.
Just work on electricity.
Something to consider. But we also could, also, we're still going to consider this PPA thing that Nadine has proposed.
We've got a lengthy list of uncompleted projects, and this would just detract from any maintenance or upkeep that they're doing or projects. I think it's a good idea, but I think it's better suited in the hands of another entity besides the city of Seymour.
Very good, very good. Point well taken.
Over there, we get to internet and?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, they've got internet, so that's good.
Anything else, Ms. Crisp? Oh, we have a, have a comment?
I do, I've got a follow-up question since we're on this topic. Since we're talking about PPA, I'm kind of a sucker for Sam, which is what I like with his agent. It's got to be, it's, and I'm surprised no one's mentioned this, since we're talking about decision. Sam's got a bullet point in his minutes addressing the PPA, and I'd really like to have you explain this, Sam, in detail, or you've talked to Joel Larson. I found this very irrelevant, taking it face value, exactly how Sam reported it. I, I, you know, I think you guys should hear about this if you're thinking about doing something with it, because he's gone to a utilities expert. So, Sam, I guess I'm asking you a question. Just kind of explain what Mr. Larson said, I wanted to-
I don't see it.
Audience, one, if it's before 9/21/1977.
Sam, that graph, would you like for that to be displayed up?
It's mine.
That table?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's Sam's, it's this one I gave him. Oh, no, no, it's down here, okay.
Okay.
Definitely.
Possibly not.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember reading that.
Oh.
Yes, what is this?
That would be the fourth one, one, two, three, four, fifth, and seventh class. That was it, you passed, I'm sorry.
There it is.
It's a little difficult to see.
Can everybody see that?
Can you see that, Dan?
Well, I've got a copy of the chart, so yeah, I'm simply good.
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sam.
All right. This is all Dan's fault, let me start off by saying that.
That usually goes without saying.
Well, you just didn't bring it up, I mean, the report, I think it needs explanation.
Well, the reason it's in my report is because Mr. Yule had a copy of your newspaper, and so he called me and asked me what was going on with the PPA. Joel Lawson is the vice president of MPUA, which is overall the electric, and he called me in reference to the PPA article that's in our paper. And he said, what's going on? And so I, I told him, you know, everything that I knew about it, that motions have been made to look at it and cut it out of, do away with it before it's collecting it. And he said to me, you can't do that. I said, well, okay, you know, he said, your, your city's going to go broke if you don't pay out. I said, well, we're just looking at it for three months.
Yeah.
And so, anyway, he, he talked for 45 minutes, but basically he said to me, your rates are too low. He said, your PPA should never be over a penny, and our PPA, over the five years that we've been in the contract we're in right now, has averaged 1.2 cents. Now, we all know that some months, it's, it's two cents, which is- Now, we all know that some months it's, it's two cents, which is, equates to twenty cents. I'm not saying that right. Let me get my paper.
Twenty percent?
Twenty percent, okay, that's good, yes. Okay, so, but he said it shouldn't be but one cent. And he says, the problem is that your rates are too high, are too low. So he sent me this form right here that has several cities on it and two of the largest electric providers in Missouri. And the green line, if you will, is, is an average, overall average for Missouri, and at six hundred and nine kilowatts a month. And so you can look at our cost, it's on there both without the PPA and with the PPA. And then comparing to Mansfield and Ava, Seminole, which is lower, Empire District, which is one of the largest producers. And they have winter rates and summer rates, and then the last one there, I don't know how to pronounce it, Amerun.
Amerun?
Amerun, is that what you said, okay? So you can see that our rates, even with our PPA, are in the ballpark.
Well, maybe we need to forget the PPA and just go down like one cent on, on like where it's ten point eight, go down to nine point eight.
But you said that the rates were too low.
Still reduces revenue, which is the problem that creates...
We're gonna try, y'all, let's think that three minutes through.
I hadn't brought this up because it was my understanding we was gonna have another meeting to speak more to... So I didn't overlook it, Dan, if you will. I just...
We decide to table it for another meeting.
We're getting left field here on PPA, I'm not careful.
What I'm finding most interesting in this chart is that the comparative comparison's always been Seminole. Well, they're higher than we are.
Right.
That's with an assumed franchise fee and so on and so forth.
Correct, but I mean, I mean, if you look, I mean, kind of the numbers don't lie. I'm looking at the green line and I'm looking at the blue line. And our utilities are, you know, it certainly depends on kilowatt usage, sometimes we're lower than Seminole, sometimes we're higher than Seminole, but...
And that's due to the availability charge on the bottom side of Seminole. That's why, I would, I would focus more on the blue line, 'cause realistically, I'm not sure where his data came from on the usage. But I would say realistically, most households are gonna use greater than a thousand anymore. So I would say the blue line would be more realistic on comparisons.
This lady came in to Dan's, said her electric bill was eight hundred dollars.
I've said on a lot of it. I realize you, you wanna do what's best for the citizens. But as a utility clerk, a lot of those, I know for a fact that some people that have the really high utility bills, there's eleven to thirteen people living in one household here in Seymour with nobody working. Now, that's thirteen people at home, using the toilet, watching TV, heater turned up, air conditioner turned up. I have another couple that the mother is on oxygen and her son is disabled. And he told me out of his own mouth, they smoke, both of them smoke. So that they don't create a hazard for a fire, they have the heat cranked up and all the windows open so that their smoke from their cigarettes can go out the window while their heat's cranking.
With oxygen?
With oxygen.
Oh, yeah.
What is the nature of the complaint of the high bill in the eight hundred dollar range you're referring to? Is that a, a couple, is that a family with multiple children? Is that a business that's just a house? Just an average-sized house? Is there a late fees assessed on that? Is it strictly kilowatt usage?
It could be two bills, like she could be in arrears and it could be two bills.
All those, all those things come into play in the big picture of, of a high bill complaint, I guess is where I'm going.
I have one street, new homes, two new homes, pay less than five, probably five to ten years old. And one household has young couple with four or five kids. And the other one is just two middle-aged people. You would think homes dealt by the same builder, one of their bills is like a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars a month. The other one is four hundred and fifty to five hundred a month.
Phew, well, mine's three hundred and fifty.
So, so you have to take into consideration how many children they have, if they're in and out constantly. How often these people are home.
Yeah, but it doesn't make that big a deal, because they don't have that much.
They're gone all day long to work, where they set their thermostat. I myself leave my thermostat on seventy-eight degrees, winter, summer, whatever, or a little winter, I don't winter, it's about six days.
That's what we live by, so...
But, and I, I just know for a fact that a lot of the people that come in kinda tell on themselves because they, you know, they say, well, my kids was doing this, my kids was doing that. But, but the largest bill that I know that we have within the city is got quite a few people living within the home and none of them work and they're home all day long. And they pay a month behind every month, so they've always got two months' bills on their, when their statement comes out. It's got last month's bill and this month's bill.
I just, I just think in, in consideration of a utility rate as a whole, when you're servicing roughly seven hundred residences or dwellings, businesses, all that's inclusive there, do we have about seven hundred meters?
I thought it was about eight hundred.
Eight or nine hundred meters?
Eight or nine hundred.
I'm a little shy on, I guess I'm behind. But anyways, the, the point is, I think five or ten or fifteen high bill complaints in the grand scheme of nine hundred, are we gonna, are we gonna change our rate based on, based on two percent complaining? Which quite possibly could have many other factors playing in. You said your bill was about three hundred and fifty, and what is your square foot of your house, about thirty-five hundred? My, my father's bill, I know because I, I pay it monthly on Seminole, is around a hundred and fifty dollar average. And that's less than a thousand square foot. So it, it's all relative to the activity and the structure and your habits. And I guarantee a lot of your complaints probably have late fees and penalties assessed on their bill and probably forty percent of their bill is, is additional fees they could avoid by paying their bill in a timely manner.
Mine in stores, I think it's six hundred and fifty. What was yours, Joel, at your store last month?
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine? Wow.
That's not excessive.
Huh?
That's not excessive.
No, no, six hundred and fifty, I must be...
And, and that, that provokes up my statement, that it's, it's, it's relative to, to habits and usage, the...
In the store, we don't keep it that hot. How about that, cool?
The issue in, in my mind is, is probably, there's, there's gonna be circumstances where, where people are in financial hardships and they can't pay their bill. I'm gonna say three-quarters of those, seventy-five percent of those circumstances is based on poor decisions that they have made that's put them in that financial hardship. The, the late fees and, and things that are assessed to the bill because of, the, the lack of making good decisions in their usage habits.
Well, it's mainly like the older people complain to me, it's not, it's really not...
Well, and in that case, they probably do pay in a timely manner. It's more my generation that has trouble paying their bills, I think.
Yeah, that's right. But it's not that generation's complaint.
I, I just think it's, I just think it's a reckless course we're headed down here.
Well, I, I think that maybe it would be...
Well, if we do a study, we'll find out.
Yes, it would be better suited to do a more in-depth study on this thing, Mr. Bennett. And it, and it might be a reckless pursuit in some ways if you single one person out. But when you consider the whole town, it's not reckless. It's just a means of seeing how we can maybe better service the people of the town. You know, and I've thought for a while that we could have a town hall meeting. And that might be a good way to, if we get more people participate and come out to a meeting, then we would get a greater number to tell us what they think about the utility bills. And we could answer those questions. You know, how many in your household? Do you pay a late fee? How big is your house? How old is your house? All those pertinent questions that we need to know to make an accurate decision on something that's as important as this, as Mr. Bennett points out.
Here's my concern with that, Larry. And I, I get what you guys are doing, I do, I'm supportive of that, I'm a, I'm a known curmudgeon. The problem is, it's kinda like having a town hall meeting and saying, bringing all the city employees in and saying, hey, do y'all wanna raise? What the heck do you think they're gonna say? It's the same thing if you bring the community to a town hall meeting and say, you want your utility rates lower? Well, my gosh, I'll show up, yeah, I want them low. I mean, Kirk pays twelve thousand a year in PPA charges at the back. But he's not getting it bribed about.
I'm not an expert on...
My fear is, as you guys move forward, as I've learned in private businesses, many of us have, there are fixed costs of business that are always on the upswing, insurance, health insurance, all these things. And the city's gotta keep a constant revenue stream coming in. If you don't, you guys are doomed. This is our cash now, electric, it's the only way you guys make money. If we don't have the utility here, we are portling. We really are.
That is true, that's true, Dan.
If you look at the city budget and you look at it as a P and L, if I were, there's no money there.
That's true.
Except the electric. I mean, there's some sales tax money, but a big chunk of it's earmarked for the pool. By voters, I'll note.
Absolutely.
But I mean, that's earmarked. In terms of true sales tax revenue, we, we don't have enough here to sustain anything. Maybe a clerk and two or three employees. Well, we sure could take our fees and profits. That's kind of what, I mean, I can say, I theoretically completely agree with you, Nadine, that I love to see costs come back to the people. But this just scares the heck out of me. Because I, I don't, as I've studied it too, because I hear people bandy around utility rates, and I've done my own research on this, I don't think we're very high. I, I pay utilities on properties in other communities that I have. And I kinda start pushing the kilowatt hour stuff and I think we're, I think we're in line. And this chart Sam's got, Empire District, for example, at least got, Empire District, that, that's, everything surrounding Seymour, I own their stock. It's Nixa, it's now called Aldonquin, actually, technically, but it's Willer, Nixa, Ozar, Republic. That, that's those communities, I mean, on the kilowatts are at one fifty-seven, we're paying one fourteen. Amerun, that's a lot of other stuff, namely, people east, they have Amerun to more east. That's their dam that broke at the Elephant State Park and flooded everything. But again, if you look at Amerun's rates, they're one of the largest utility companies in the U.S.
That's right.
So, that's my, just as a resident, as a business owner, as a resident of town two, that's my fear with this. And I just am fearful if we get into town hall meetings, we'll get everybody in that doesn't pay their bill. We'll get everybody in, but I will guarantee you won't see anybody from Price Center there, and they pay a bunch. And I guarantee you won't see Kirk Penner here, he pays a bunch. Because it's an understood constitution.
Good point, well taken, Dan.
There's things I can learn about this PPA. I don't, not an expert on it, but I can prom, I do know one thing. If you pull three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year out of our budget, and that's what this will cost, I know what that will do.
Well, I don't think we're talking about doing that, but you're right.
You wanna do it for three months, eighty, eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars right along in there?
That's still a lot of money.
I would come a lot closer if we could find a place to cut that much in the budget, to take that money and put utilities under the road out there where we can get some business growing in here.
I agree.
This, this is very short-sighted.
Well, and I think that we do need to augment our income, which is what we need to do. I think Benjamin Franklin said, you're one of two things, you either diminish your wants or augment your income. So we need to think about how to augment our income for the city, and then these problems will go away.
We get, we get utilities out there and get some businesses coming in where we're collecting some more sales tax, we might really be able to afford to lower the PPA then. But just lowering it now with no, no way of, and no way of ever, of, of getting it back, it's, it's a nightmare.
The only real chance in my mind of, of a reduction in that PPA amount is, is through what I, I preach, conservatism. The PPA is, is absorption of the city's utility or electricity that's expended within its infrastructure, right? Obviously, the bulk of it's probably at the wastewater treatment plant.
It is.
And secondly, would likely be security lights, street lights.
How about the wells?
There's the wells.
The wells are second.
Make up for, so...
What's, what about line loss?
So we start line loss.
Line loss, and then that average, like seven percent?
Line loss would, last, best guess I figured was around seven percent. We, we can simply look, if we're going to do a study, at ways that we can conserve electricity as a city that would in turn lower that portion that the residents are having to have dispersed among their bills. Example, bathrooms at the park. Every time I open my door, if it's dark out, the lights are usually on in the bathrooms, whether the door's open or closed. Foreign incandescent light bulbs isn't gonna be much in the grand scheme of things, but...
Placemat don't lock them up at night?
I don't know who's responsible for that, but typically the lights remain on, I'll say that. When they are locked up, they're, they're typically still illuminated. I don't know if that's for security purposes or just because it happens. But we can, if we're gonna, if we're gonna honestly do a study on the PPA, then I think our efforts should be more towards how can we reduce our consumption? Because that would reduce the amount that has to be absorbed by the PPA.
And that's a good point. I mean, it should be a total spectrum. And as Dan points out, and rightfully so, you know, we, there are just so many dollars in the budget to go around to, to be able to accommodate the people. We don't wanna take things that we're doing for them already away from them. But, you know, I think it's wise to look at this thing, and maybe there is some areas to be considered, Grady, that we can in our, out of our own pocket conserve from what we're doing here as a city. And, and possibly build this system out, as Jim indicated. Because that's one thing that Sam and I have talked about, be ready for the growth. Because if you're not ready and the growth comes to you, I assure you that they will go somewhere else. In fact, I think we might have lost the Sonic that's in Rogersville from our city right here. We could have had them right on that corner probably if we'd been ready.
So that's...
Well, it's built and open, yeah, it's, it's an operating business already, so yeah.
Oh, yeah, next door to the bank. Yeah.
So we talked about that, and I spoke to Mary about this, that we had some CDs coming up. We might think about using some of those monies to build out the infrastructure to be ready for that growth, just like Jim's talking about.
That's where to spend our money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, I agree with that.
I agree, you need to be ready for growth, or you'll never experience growth.
I've got plenty more along those lines to say pertaining to PPA. I'm kinda shooting from the hip, I don't have my notes here, I thought we...
Well, what don't we, um...
I think that's the, I think that's the more productive and responsible approach rather than, we're talking about the, the citizens as a whole. And we're gonna penalize the vast majority and remove the PPA, which will result in a, a large amount of services being cut to the citizens for the benefit of two and a half, maybe three percent of the citizens, maybe less than two percent.
But you see, we haven't done that, Councilman, but here's what we have done, we presented a... a, a desire to move in that direction, and we've got all kinds of good suggestions now to maybe accommodate that. So, so I, my, my suggestion is just this from the chair, is to table this discussion for, for this meeting, give us thirty days, and then we'll have one session altogether dedicated to this for further discussion, and then we'll see what decisions come out of that. Now, we're, Councilman Chris, you have the floor, so the decision's up to you. That's, that's my suggestion.
We will table it for thirty days and then we'll study.
Well, if, if. If my understanding's right, and I don't mean to interrupt you, if my understanding's right, we have to have a budget study to find out where the money can come from, but, but we need to have to do that first before we can, there's even any point in going in to this other.
I would disagree and, and say that we would be, I think we have our PPA, we decide for sure. I don't mean this in a negative way, but I'm not wasting four hours of a Thursday night to sit up here and study a budget and look for three hundred and thirty or three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to cut, when realistically, we've not even made the decision to go that route, and that quite possibly, and hopefully would never happen. But let's figure out a definitive direction we're going with this PPA thing before we have a four hour budget meeting looking for ser, it's pretty simple as far as the budget goes for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You're gonna dissolve the police department, you're gonna dissolve the fire department, you're gonna stop any maintenance and repairs on the street and the electric system. That's, that's, that's basically your three options. So, I mean, you would have to.
We're saying what we can do. You're saying what, what's gonna happen.
No, I mean, that's realistically, where, where else are you gonna take three hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
We're not saying we're taking three hundred and thirty thousand.
Well, we're not, we're not proposing that.
That's three months, Warren.
I thought you said three months was eighty-five thousand.
No, it's three hundred, or, it's around a hundred.
It's around a hundred, yes.
Around a hundred, yeah.
What, what keeps, what keeps making this so hard to understand is this. This month, our, our PPA was point, one point four, which is fourteen dollars for each home.
Right.
Okay? That's not much money. But for the city, it's almost thirty thousand dollars.
For the home, it's, how much? Fifteen dollars? Mine was like sixty dollars, my PPA charge at home.
You said on average?
Yeah.
I'm talking average. I'm talking thousand kilowatts.
And it predicated on the kilowatt that we use, each one being different, but if you multiply the PPA times the kilowatt used, the kilowatt usage this month was one point oh four, something like that.
Four, yeah. So it, and on a thousand, which is average home, that's about fourteen dollars. But for the city itself, it's almost thirty thousand that we lose.
Right.
If we don't collect. So that's, it's, it just.
All these things have to be considered.
So we have to pay electricity, or the city does, for the storm shelter. How much is that enough?
I don't have that with me.
That was reduced greatly.
It's been reduced greatly because I, I made sure that was cut way down.
What is way down now? Leslie, what is that?
I don't, we'd have to look it up.
Probably more than in half, or, or, probably around, this is a, a best guess on, on my memory, which is terrible. I would say we're probably in the neighborhood of thirty percent of the utility it used to be, and that was, that was due to the additional HVAC being installed to just control the office rather than climate control the entire facility.
Okay.
And is that pretty accurate?
And then in the wintertime, we have that water sprinkler system in there. And, you know, I don't know that we, I don't know that we can, but maybe we can just drain that thing for the, this coming winter and, and not keep that building.
I have a question. But aren't we, if we cut it off entirely, aren't we going to get mold again?
We probably could. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
That's why they had to cool it and, and had to heat it because. We don't want that.
No.
It's, it's still climate controlled, just at a more moderated rate because the office space is separated now, I think, right? It's still controlled?
Yes.
Let me, let me suggest for brevity of time's sake, we've spent a couple of hours here in deliberation of things, and we have a good meeting. I think it's been a very positive meeting. If, if it would be the pleasure of Councilman Chris to move this on to a thirty day session, consider the PPA and do, do a thorough study on this thing.
And just study for the town.
And bring into account the idea that if we cut that out of the budget, we may not have monetary resources to do the other things we need to do. So we'll consider all those things. I've asked for some numbers here myself that we will take into account at, at that meeting. So if that be your pleasure.
I'll make a motion for thirty days.
Move this on to a thirty day session. Do I hear a second?
What day you wanna do it on?
Uh, Jim, that would be.
May twenty-sixth is thirty, is the.
That's our regular meeting night? That's, you wanna have a study on a regular meeting night?
What is, what is your pleasure? I mean, I'm here to do the pleasure of the council.
The, the evening's already wiped out, if you will. We've already planned to be here out of respect of everybody's schedules. I think if we just bear an elongated meeting, that would be more beneficial than, than sacrificing an entire another evening. That's, that's my perspective, the, the perspective of, I would rather live.
Okay, we have a.
Sitting up here.
A suggestion to modify that to, to mean, what date, Mr. Bennett?
What date?
October twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of October.
Or October.
October twenty-sixth, and that is what, a?
That's a Thursday, it's sort of our regular meeting.
Okay, all right, we'll take that meeting time to consider this.
Okay.
And, and perhaps if there's a lot other to be considered, we could move it up, get the bulk of, of business out of the way at our next meeting and try to keep everything as light as we can for that following meeting.
Right.
As far as our reports or this day to day stuff goes.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. So on the twenty-sixth, we're talking about this meeting. Do I hear a second? We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, anything else, Councilman Chris? Moving on to Councilman Ashley.
Uh, yeah, we need to, this road out there by McDonald's, bump about that high goes all the way across it. It's been there for a long time. Man, it needs to be fixed. I don't know, has anybody looked at that?
I have looked at it. In fact, I had the people out to look where it burned.
Yeah, where it burned, I saw that before.
And I included that hump.
Okay.
I was wondering if that's what you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I got a twelve thousand dollar bid to repair both of those. I've asked for two more bids from the other contractors we used to do asphalt work, and I have not gotten any response from them.
While they're at it, or can we have somebody look at that big bump that's right in the middle of, of Clinton and Main Street?
Yes, that'd be good, too.
By Casey's, yes.
Yeah, whichever way you turn, you hit that bump.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
It's right in the middle of the road.
I can, I can have them look at it. But the bid so far, the only one I've gotten is twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Now, Sam, is any of that gonna be covered by that fellow's insurance company?
I don't know, Larry. I'll have to look back.
Mr. Link, what would be our exposure there? What would their exposure be in reference to damage to city property?
Generally speaking, the insurance company pays back city on one year's damage to city property. You just need to make sure, on the police report, see what insurance company the person had, and then just basically contact them and submit a claim to them. And they usually will take, take care of that stuff through there, through the insurance policy.
We'll just need to make sure that whoever performs the work would itemize that out, the, the burnt versus the pumps and stuff.
Right.
The two pumps, yeah. I, I just don't know about the one, the last one, so is it right here or where?
Yeah, right, right, right in, in the middle of the four way stop up here by Methodist Church.
Okay.
Do what?
Mm-hmm.
It may be State's Park.
It is.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look.
It is, or, or they're the ones that done the repair last time.
Right, they, yeah, they did the.
Well, they're, they're, they're the knot in the middle of the road.
Cause it was a.
Yes, and you can't miss.
But if it's them, it's them.
I think they did.
They, they did.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll live with it.
Right, right.
Very good.
It took us a while to get the.
Well, if the insurance company fixes this one down here, well, then maybe we can fix this one up here. Maybe the state might be mandated to fix that one, that'd cut us down to one. That would be good.
You can call the state guy in the morning and talk to him, and sit and, and get next big.
Good. Councilman Ashley.
Okay, I'm done. We should've just went with it when Larry forgot the alderman.
I forgot everybody, didn't I? My apologies to, to each of you for overlooking you. But it seemed like everything was going so smooth this time. I was, I was so glad to be done and have a good meeting. So, and I think we have had a very productive meeting. I enjoyed being here tonight and listening to what you had to say. I enjoyed having Mr. Schu here and his prayer for us, and I especially appreciated his plea for unity. That's great. Now.
Nadine, Nadine.
Seeing that everything has been discussed now, and I don't think I've overlooked anybody, is there anything else to come before this board for the good of Seymour? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. We stand adjourned.
Yeah.
It's hard to listen. The state on that hump.